Senator Nicholas, you were asking a question about an amendment proffered by Senator Torres, and I would -- I'd hoped that everybody had worked things out, but your issue hasn't been resolved. Do you want to further your question?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, with respect to what was being discussed prior to our recess, the way the language is written in this amendment, we're basically saying that CLTC shall allow said activity, said commercial activity, to continue on the property pursuant to the existing lease or license. And what I'm trying to understand here is, okay, let's say I lease a space for 25 years, and I put a commercial operation on that space, it's a pigery or what have you, some commercial operation. After 25 years is up, the way I'm reading this amendment is that if I want to renew for another 25 years, the CLTC shall allow said activity to continue on the property pursuant to the existing lease or license. So if I have a lease now, and it expires, and I want to continue, this language, based on how I'm reading it, is going to compel the CLTC to allow me to continue regardless of whatever else it is they want to do with the property. So if I have a pigery right now in the middle of, you know, CLTC land, there's nothing around it, but 25 years from now, CLT surveys that land, they put infrastructure around it, and my pigery lease is up, if I want to keep operating my pigery, even though CLTC wants to convert the entire area into a residential district, this language will compel CLTC to allow me to continue regardless of what their future land use plans end up being. So that's why I have a concern with this language, and that's why I'm raising this issue in alignment with the amendment that's being proffered by the retiring speaker. If we change it from "shall" from May to "shall," we're going to compel the CLTC to continue allowing commercial operations regardless of what their future land use plans are, and regardless of whether or not the existing lease actually expires. And that's how I'm reading it, unless someone can explain to me that I'm reading it incorrectly. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Torres, any -- either one --
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
One of the sponsors?
Point of order. Before we broke for the lunch recess pursuant to your order, Senator Torres was going to make several amendments, and when we came back from lunch, she's actually prepared the amendment in written form. So I rise to point of order, asking if she would consider withdrawing her first amendment, and then presenting this amendment to the amendment, then the discussion can be centered around this written amendment to the amendment. She's prepared it and made copies, and copies have been distributed to all the senators. I think procedurally, that's how we should go. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Torres, can we just take this one by one, each amendment separately, because I think there was a request to separate them. So let's do the May and "shall."
So, Mr. Speaker, I respectfully thank you very much, first of all, for calling a recess at the time that you did. I believe I was hungry at the time. And I respectfully withdraw my objection to the amendment that was proffered by the author. So I'm withdrawing my amendment to revert back to, to revert back to the word "may." So I am not objecting to the word "shall" at this point.
You're withdrawing your objection, and you want to mean you're withdrawing amendment to the amendment?
The amendment to the amendment which was made a "shall." And you're withdrawing that now, so we're back to "may."
No, I changed "shall." Senator Nicholas's amendment was to change this. She wanted to retain it. She wanted to keep the "may." And then Senator Nicholas came up and asked why, so we took the recess. So now she's going to withdraw her amendment to the amendment.
Just that her withdrawal is...
Yes.
That's my...
All right. Fine. Has everybody received a copy of the new Torres amendments?
No, but you're...
Yes. It's marked MCT on the top. Senator Torres, you're recognized on your amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I would like to proffer an amendment to the amendment where on line, where on line 15, it, I would like the language to read, it presently reads on line 15 towards the middle. I will begin with the word, actually, I'll begin with line 13, beginning with the word "however." However, in the event that a designated available land has an existing commercial activity by virtue of a previous authorization, comma, the CLTC shall allow said activity to continue on the property. My amendment is to strike the word "pursuant to" and insert the words under the terms "of," so that the sentence now reads, "The CLTC shall allow said activity to continue on the property under the terms of the existing lease or license."
All right, that's the First Amendment, then.
Yes.
The, under the terms of, under the terms of the existing lease and license. Senator Nicholas, did you want to repeat your earlier comment?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker. I may actually have an amendment to the amendment that would allow us to come to terms on the middle ground here. And I put this out there, maybe you would like to dispose of this original amendment, and then have me proffer this one subsequently, but I leave it to you for your guidance. I'd like to just present it at this time. After the word "shall," add a comma, and put the language "notwithstanding the expiration or legal revocation of an existing lease," comma. So the CLTC shall allow the activity to continue the property under the terms of the existing lease or license. But if you add my language there, "notwithstanding the expiration or legal revocation of an existing lease," then that would still allow for leases to be reconsidered when they expire or when they're legally revoked. So we can, we can move this language forward, and I would have some subsequent language to add to try and, and address my concerns of changing the word from "may" to "shall."
There is no, at the present time, "shall" is...
Not even some...
Is not even an issue at this point.
Right.
That amendment was proffered by Senator Rodriguez. There's been no, maybe we should go back to that and just finally settle that once and for all. Not your amendment, but his initial amendment.
No, but I think, I believe she's proffering an amendment to his initial amendment. So I would, I'll just withdraw it this time and let her...
But the Rodriguez amendment had three parts on it, too. And we've not addressed the issue of "may" to "shall." So let's go back to the Rodriguez amendment, first resolve the issue of whether or not we change the language that's currently in 175 from "may" to "shall." And I'll allow Senator Rodriguez to speak on the reason for which he wants it to be mandatory as opposed to permissive, and then allow any other senator to speak on the issue, and then we'll resolve the issue of "may" to "shall," and then move forward with the next amendment. Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just to reiterate my reasoning why I made this amendment from "may" to "shall," as I stated earlier, it's really to provide protection to the existing leaseholders or license holders, for those who are in good standing, who have not violated any provisions of their current lease or license, and protecting them in a way, Mr. Speaker, that if they're, if the provisions in their lease or license now allows them to be able to exercise an option to renew, or exercise, the exercise, you know, having them come before the commission to renegotiate, we want to make sure that, you know, based on that, that they're able to still do that. Because the way I read this language before we amended from "shall," from "may" to "shall," is that if the commission makes a determination of an existing property that is held by a beneficiary who has a lease or license, if the commission feels, well, you know what, I think there's better use for this property, we probably can get more revenues for this property, notwithstanding or regardless of the contract that they have in front of them, that option for that, the commission or the lease or license holder to exercise, to renew, then they're going to do it, because we're saying it is subjective, they're able to do it. And so all we're saying here is that, and only if the license or leaseholder is in good standing with their, the terms of their contract with the commission, or with laws of Guam, you know, they're up to the taxes, then they should be, you know, we should afford them that, that sense of protection. And if, if indeed, the, there's no option, the term of the, of the license or lease has expired, then it revert, it reverts back to the initial part of this, of this sub item B, which is, it has to go through that competitive bid process, that piece of property is put into that, and that it has to go through that process. So it's just really protecting those that have the existing lease and have that option to renew or to at least come before the commission to work out some sort of agreement. So that's, so that's the rationale behind.
Thank you very much for that. Senator Torres, did you wish to speak? Because I think it's important that all the colleagues listen to the example that was proffered by Senator Nicholas. Okay. Senator Nicholas, you want to repeat that one more time?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I see where the retiring speaker is coming from. If you need recourse to protect you, your recourse is your lease agreement, it is your option agreement. If the CLTC violates that, you have a case to take to court. By changing it from "may" to "shall," what we're doing is we're compelling the CLTC to renew all leases so long as the lessee wants to renew. If the lease expires after 25 years, the CLTC shall allow said activity to continue on the property pursuant to the terms of the existing lease or license. So if I lease property right now, and I put a pigery on that property, and there is no development around that, and 25 years later, the CLTC comes around, and all the surrounding properties are surveyed, and infrastructure is laid out, and they're ready to turn it into a residential development, and they want to conclude my pigery lease so that they can have a proper residential environment, by changing it from "may" to "shall," if I want to keep my pigery, there's nothing they can do about it, they have to allow me to continue my lease. So the reason why we need to keep that language as "may" is so that the CLTC can come up with land use plans and be able to say, hey, you know what, yeah, maybe today, the best use of that property is to lease it for whatever purpose, but 25 years from now, or however long the lease is, we're going to use it for, we may plan to use it for a different purpose, so we may lease it to you for 10 years, 15 years, 25 years. But after that lease has expired, we may have something else ready to go for that piece of property. If we change it from "may" to "shall," then every single lease that's out there right now, and every single future lease that we issue out for commercial purposes, the CLTC must allow them to continue that lease if they want to continue that lease. So we're basically going to be stripping away the ability for the CLTC to make any kind of future determinations as to what they want to do with commercial property that's currently being leased, or ever going to be leased, because that power will now be in the hands of the lessee, who shall be able to compel CLTC to allow them to continue the activity pursuant to the existing lease or license.
Thank you very much. Senator Tom added, did I see, let me just, the author jumped up in the back, and so I think I should call him.
Well, we are, we are speaking on the Rodriguez amendment.
Correct.
Am I correct? And, and I was just, as I was listening to the retiring speaker, it seems that it's not so much that the, the CLTC may or shall renew the lease if the lessee wants to renew it, more so than really if the CLTC believes that the activity continues to be beneficial to the CLTC beneficiaries, Chamoros. So given that, then, God, it's cold in here. Given that, it's really regardless of whether, you know, whether it's a "may" or a "shall," the "may," I guess, is just, kind of gives a little bit more control to the CLTC. But all, but in the end, they still have that final say, because if they deem that the activity that's existing there is no longer beneficial to CLTC beneficiaries, then, then if they make that determination, then they don't have to renew the lease. So it seems that at this point, really, whether it's a "may" or a "shall," it doesn't make much difference.
The co-sponsor also had his hand up. You wish to...
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what I see here is a fundamental discussion, and although it's just dealing with one word, "may" or "shall," it's extremely fundamental in my mind's eye, because what we understand the situation to be before the Chamoros Land Trust Commission is that by some authority, they've engaged in licenses, they, whether they call it commercial leases or licenses, by, throughout the years, they have issued these licenses for individuals to have a license to certain properties to engage in commercial-type activity. And so if the, if that basis to which that contract was issued is being challenged, meaning that the only time that they should have been able to issue those licenses are pursuant to these rules and regs, if the basis to which that contractual agreement is challenged, then maybe they might challenge whether or not an actual valid license exists. And so the recourse, if there was a valid license given, certainly would be to hold the government to that contract. But what, what I've been monitoring, the conversations and the discussions and the whole development of the need for rules and regs for the Chamoros Land Trust Commission, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, I'm aware that there are individuals out there who are holders to the existing, to these existing license, licenses that are being threatened, that just wait till these rules and regs are adopted, we would be, we would go back and renegotiate. If you don't agree with these terms, we will terminate that license, because there was no basis to give these licenses in the first place. And I, I think the, what the amendment does, which I support, it certainly moves to honor the government's commitment by way of these licenses given to these individuals. And we could talk a little bit more about whether or not this would automatically grant an additional 25 years. For me, if you want to do something consistent with existing terms and conditions, those terms and conditions include the number of years, the date it expired. So I really don't think, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, that this amendment would give them an additional, even an additional minute on the existing license, or at least that they have. I, if there needs to be language to clarify that, but I seriously don't think that the intent of this amendment, sponsored by Senator Rodriguez, is to say that in the event that these licenses are up, that if the individual wants to continue that kind of commercial activity, that the Chamoros Land Trust Commission has no option other than to just continue the existing arrangement. And when you, when you bring it back to pursuant to the existing lease or license, when you bring it back to those terms, you're talking about the same number of years, you're talking about when it expires, you're, so if you want to be more clear about that, then maybe you should. But I, I also joined the sponsor in this amendment to say that we don't ever want to provide an opportunity for the government to be subjective in its dealings with these kinds of contractual arrangements. We don't want an opportunity for the Chamoros Land Trust Commission to, upon the adoption and promulgation of these rules and regs, to go back to these same individuals and say, although you have a license, although you have a lease, we now determine that it's not consistent with the Chamoros Land Trust Commission's objectives, and so we determine that your leases or licenses are hereby voided. I, I certainly don't want to create that kind of arrangement, and I, this is why I support the amendment. I wanted to clarify that the intent of the amendment is not to add additional minutes to the existing licenses or leases, Mr. Speaker. It's basically to hold the government to its contractual commitment to these parties, regardless of how that contract was executed, or under whatever authority that contract or lease was given. And that's what this amendment would do.
Senator Rodriguez, you had a comment? Um, no, we're just, we're starting first with the "may" and the "shall."
Point of information, Mr. Speaker?
Please.
If I may, just two items. The first item is that no matter what happens, if we change rules and regulations, they cannot go back and revoke contracts. I mean, we can't change any rule and regulation now in the government and cause any pre-existing contract formed prior to that change to be revoked. We'd be asking for lawsuits. So I really don't think that, that these amendments here would in any way affect the existing leases. And the second concern, Mr. Speaker, is that under the existing language, if we change it from "may" to "shall," and if the, if the idea is that, oh, but, you know, it has to continue to be beneficial to the CLTC beneficiaries, the leases already are beneficial to those beneficiaries, because they're generating income for the Land Trust Commission. Now, the argument, if we change it from "may" to "shall," will then become, well, I'm still beneficial, because you're still collecting lease, a lease payment from me, and the language now says "shall," so you have to renew my lease. So we, we really need to be just cautious about, about, you know, the interpretations, and maybe we can get some kind of legal perspective from legal counsel as to, as to exactly what kind of ramification there may be to existing leases, and what ramification there may be to the idea that the activity has to continue to be beneficial to the CLTC beneficiaries.
Thank you. We'll take a short recess.
Well, take a short recess. Thank you very much for that recess. We're still -- anyone wish to be heard on the may and shall issue? If not, Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my -- I have a fear, of course, using the word shall, so automatically right there, I don't support the shall, and for various reasons. Some of the things I'm thinking of, that normally we try not to do in legislation, is grandfathering all existing leases, licenses, contracts, what have you. So, but technically, when you look at this, we have these, all of these contracts that I'm looking for, pages of them are leases or licenses that are currently existing, that those who continue to remain in effect and will continue until it reaches its expiration date. So then, when we say shall, then, of course, automatically, going down the list here, and the biggest example, of course, will be now the Guam Municipal Golf Course of 197 acres, you add, again, an additional 30 or 35 years, we -- then that means, of course, they have that -- I mean, the commission has no choice but to renew it for that length of time. Now, I hear from some of our colleagues that somehow word is going around that CLTC is saying that as soon as this passes, that they are now going to go in and start to renegotiate and start to change what is in existence. And that's a contract, and we can't do that, they can't do that. I mean, and if they're saying that they could, then you would think that the very first thing they would have done is exactly then look at the Guam Municipal Golf Course because of some violations or lateness in payments and all of that, and yet they didn't do it. So we're now just focusing, I guess, on some of these leases that we have, that are currently in existence, but we all know too, is that if they start to change a lease or a contract, then their recourse is to go to court. But now, we're taking all of that away, you know, by saying that it's -- they have no choice. And I love the example, yes, of the pigery, and because -- but then it even takes it somewhere closer, where already, there is in existence a location down south where everywhere around it are residential. But now, we're going to have, because of a contract that currently exists, a project, so to speak, that, you know, the people, the residences don't want in their community. But we're not going to have any choice, the residents won't have a choice either, because now we're saying that the commission members shall renew that lease again, for another 30 years, 35 years.
Mr. Speaker, I hate to do this to my speaker, but if I can do a point of information, please?
Please.
Mr. Speaker, the, you know, I think we've got to caution ourselves, because the examples that we're using are examples of things that have already been public, that these leases and licenses that we're referencing have defaulted, have defaulted, they're late in payment, or they haven't paid taxes on time. And so what this amendment does is that, if you are in that category, that you've defaulted, you will not be able to exercise this option. So I just, you know, want to be able to caution that the examples we use, if we can just make it clear, those people will not be able to take advantage of this amendment if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, to continue, the examples, of course, I was using, it's a real example of, you know, I was just saying what it is, you're right, the Watali site. All of the residents had meetings, signed petitions, have contacted all of the members, and basically, they said they do not want that particular activity in an area that's all residential. Now, yes, hypothetically, you know, the example, not in my backyard, and definitely a slaughterhouse, a pigery, you know, is not something I know people would want to have next to them. And many times, like, for example, now, if, let's say, they decide then to give a license to do a slaughterhouse or a pigery, you're right. And we have a lease right now, well, I'm not sure yet if, how legal that is, I'm surely not in position to say that, but I know that Mr. Borja said, was that whether it's a lease or a license, only because the rules and regs weren't put out, the question was, is it legal that they should move forward, and they're claiming it is? That's going to be a lease for what, a lease based on language here, 25 years. But the issue that I think we're really losing sight of here is when we think of Chomor Land Trust, it is a trust that we should not violate. And I know we're saying that we need to do these commercial leases, because we want to be able to get the monies to go in there, to put in the infrastructure, the surveying of these properties, so that then we'll be able to lease them out for our people. But then, the next question we have to ask ourselves then, is what then, if we reach that point, that level where all of the infrastructure is put in, all of the surveying is done, and we're ready to give them out, but we can't now, because we have then committed ourselves by law, because we must, as commissioners, renew those licenses, leases, or what have you? So then, that means then, it would never ultimately go back to whom that trust was built for. A trust! Do we all understand what a trust is? I think we're losing sight of exactly what this is all about. And this is only going to, supposed to be a temporary thing, to be able then, to finance the infrastructure, to finance the surveying, so that we can give it out to our people. That's what this is all about. But we're losing sight of that. And I'm so afraid that once we start tinkering away a lot of the powers of our commissioners that they're supposed to do, and think first of the native Chamoros, because that's what this is all about. It was such a controversial view at that time, there's protests and all over, governors, two governors who didn't want to implement it, and it took the courts to make that decision, finally, that got us to where we're at. And then now, here we are, yes, granted, after how many years that we can't give out these lands, because we have not then surveyed them, and we don't have the infrastructure, and naturally, because of other laws, you know, we have to give a certain amount of acreage per person for residences, versus that the infrastructure is in place, then it's a lot less, and then you can put more people in. These leases, and if you read them, you know, very carefully, is that it provides, yes, for some commercial leases within a subdivision, within residential areas, like a mom-and-pop store, maybe a gas station, you know, a telephone pole, you know, a power pole, things of that nature, but not something much larger, that, you know, eventually will then deplete the resources for years to come. And if, even if Mr. Borja would like to potentially put in an additional 20 more above the 8,000 right now who are on a waiting list, you know, we surely can't do it, not with this kind of language. So I can't honestly support this, and, you know, and it's getting to the point that the more I think about this now, it's really making me stop and rethink, you know, it's right after lunch, you know, it's approached by several of, you know, our people who are concerned, who are feeling that we're taking away what's rightfully a trust for future generations that would always remain in perpetuity. That's what a trust is, but we're taking that away. And, you know, read the letter that came to us, that's two letters, as a matter of fact, ready, that came to us, and how quick we forget it, because now, we want to then automatically renew, you know, leases, automatically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the may and shall? If not, Senator Spisho?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I could direct your attention to this floor amendment by MCT, by Senator Torres, and in listening to all the discussions, I, you know, Mr. Speaker, it's not the intent to, in the case use of having a pigery in a certain village, it's not the intent to have that kind of commercial activity in perpetuity. And although the way the amendment is being presented, if clarity is needed, I want to offer the following. So to take out the words after shall, take out, delete the words, allow said activity to continue on the property, and you would insert, "The Chomor Land Trust Commission shall honor existing leases or licenses executed by the CLTC pursuant to any authority prior to 2015, and it continues under the terms of the existing lease or license, provided lessee or licensee has not defaulted during entire term of the lease or license, and lessee or licenses complied with the laws of Guam." I think what I'm trying to present here is, we certainly don't want, I mean, if, at the end of the current lease, that that property should revert back to the inventory of the Chomor Land Trust Commission. The Chomor Land Trust Commission should do an information for bid or request proposal to determine the highest best use of that particular property, see what kind of interest is out there, maybe, maybe that kind of activity that happened 25 years ago, something better could be for the area, so they would have that opportunity. The way the amendment is being presented is really to have the Chomor Land Trust Commission honor existing licenses and leases, because like I said earlier, if someone is going to argue that those licenses or leases should not have existed today, because there are no commercial rules and regulations, we don't want to have this resolved by the courts, and we don't want to create an opportunity for anybody to go in and undo any current licenses or leases that was executed by some authority back then, we want to let the contract run out. And I'm trying to bring all of us to a place where we can recognize that, for whatever reasons, there are licenses and leases out there, executed by Chomor Land Trust Commission and their predecessors, and so how do we let those current licenses and leases run out, without making it possible for that kind of activity and that kind of license holder to have that kind of commercial activity in perpetuity? And I certainly don't think that's what is being presented, but if it would provide us some comfort here, I move to amend the amendment. I don't, well, it's been amended already, so I would wait till, I would wait till whatever's been disposed of, but I would like for us to start considering, instead of saying, "Allow said activity to continue," to just insert the words, "to honor existing leases or licenses executed by the CLTC pursuant to any authority prior to," and then we just say 2015.
All right. Why don't I take a short recess? Work on a written amendment, and try to consolidate everything, make it in writing with all of everybody. Legislature's back in session. Senator Rodriguez, do I understand you have a new amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, it was--
Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment to the amendment.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues.
Everybody, it's, on the top, it's marked DGR as opposed to RJR.
So this is amendment to the amendment. And I'll just read it because I know that the, our people that are following on television are certainly interested to see the results of this particular discussion. And so the amendment to the amendment reads, "Award of lease through competitive bid. The lease or license for the commercial use of CLTC land designated as available for commercial activity shall be awarded through a competitive bid process to entities determined to be responsible and responsive, as defined in Guam's procurement law, to the requirements stipulated by the CLTC. However, in the event that a designated available land has an existing commercial activity by virtue of a previous authorization," so that's all original language, "we're going to strike the words, "The CLTC may allow said activity to continue on the property, "provided that the activity continues to be beneficial to CLTC beneficiaries." And to insert new language that deals with the discussion that we just had in the session home, where it'll read, "This act shall not be interpreted to invalidate existing commercial leases or licenses where lessee or licensee has not defaulted during entire term of the lease or license and lessee or licensee has completed, "has complied with the laws of Guam. At the expiration of a lease or license, the CLTC shall reconsider its designation as available land and comply with all other provisions of this act." And so certainly, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, this just underscores Senator Rodriguez's intent with the original amendment that we're not in no way going to extend the terms of these leases. And so this amendment to the amendment makes that clear. When the lease expires, it expires, and it goes back to the CLTC inventory. And that they should, through the competitive bid process, bid for that property. And then the highest and best use will be determined, and the CLTC board will have the flexibility to do all those things inconsistent with the provisions of this act. So I offer this as amendment to the amendment.
Any senator who wish to be heard on it?
No, shall not be interpreted to invalidate existing commercial leases. That's what--
Man Speaker, do you wish to be recognized? Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, there is just, you know, one question. This is in recognition that-- I hope that part of this thing takes into consideration the investment that the lessee or the, or the person, or, you know, firm that's leasing this makes towards this, in this property. And my concern here is that with that, it goes back to this whole discussion on how long these programs are for. How long can they be for? And on the other side, is it going to be worth to invest in it? So are we shooting ourselves in the foot with a company or with, you know, an individual who would like to be able to lease this, make an investment into this property, recognizing that X number of years down the road, when the lease expires on this, that all the investment placed in this is going to be off or not because then it goes back into the inventory, it's going to have to rebid on this. So I'm a little concerned here with that. And I just bring that up as a point of concern. And I, you know, I appreciate the authors, previous speakers, you know, willingness and wanting to be able to work with everybody on trying to address the issues and the concerns with regards to the language. But that said, is, I need to bring, raise that point of concern if this is in fact the language that we're going to be using. I appreciate the discussions that we had in recess with regards to what kind. But we've got a plan. But at the same token, you know, the individual who wants to lease or the, or corporation that may be interested in leasing this, and it may be great, it may be beneficial for the people and for the CLTC. But if we're going to restrict it that way, it makes, it may, they may shy away from it as well. So I just bring it up as a point of concern with regards to how this is structured. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other senator who wish to be heard on the Speaker amendment? Senator Espaldonia recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm not sure I get it. I really don't. I mean, the, the new addition basically says, "This act should not be interpreted to invalidate existing commercial leases or licenses where lessee or licensee has not defaulted during the entire term of the lease or license and lessee or licensee," it's coming to blah, 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 blah. Bottom line, we can't even do that. So why would anybody ever construe that this act was going to invalidate anything, any existing contract or any existing lease? Because under the Constitution and the contracts clause, we can't do it. So what's the point? You know, so if we erase all that, you know, saying, okay, that's pointless, and we look at the next sentence, it says, "At the expiration of a lease or license, "the CLTC shall reconsider its designation as available land and comply with all other provisions of this act." I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean. So I'm lost, Mr. Speaker, in terms of how, can I support this? Well, for what? And I'm not really sure what the objective is with this language. And I'll be real honest with you, I'm not really sure what the objective was with the language of the amendment offered by the mover of the amendment. And until we can come to what the purpose is of what we're trying to do, these are just words that have no meaning to me. And like I said, that first addition to, that this act should not be interpreted to invalidate existing commercial, we can't do that anyway. invalidate existing commercial, we can't do that anyway. And so I'm just stumped. And maybe somebody can enlighten me as to what we're trying to do with this particular area of the bill. I kind of enjoyed the original version offered by the author of the bill. But until somebody can explain what really is the end goal on, on trying to amend the original section of the bill, then I can't support it. I can't support it, because then for what? What are we doing? Right? We're going through all these semantics, we're going through all these syntax changes, and this and that, and this and that, with no real understanding of what it is we're trying to achieve. And maybe I missed the boat somewhere along the line. Maybe I just didn't hear, really, what the true intent was, but I'm still lost. And so with that, Mr. Speaker, I just wanted to add in that frustration I have at this point with this whole process. We've bogged ourselves down, and we still don't have anything that really clearly defines where we want to go. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Espaldon. Any other senator wish to be heard? Or anybody wish to address Senator Espaldon's concerns? Senator Respechio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the previous speaker's comments underscores why this amendment is necessary. I've been saying, and the sponsor of this amendment's been saying, and others have been saying, that for whatever reason, under whatever authority, there exist certain licenses and leases that has been executed by the Chomor Land Trust Commission. So over the years, we know that there's, the whole desire to provide for rules and regs is 40 years in the making, and we have center out of bringing us to this point where finally we're going to have rules and regs. The concern that I raise and others have raised, have brought to the attention of this body is that if the argument is going to be made that those existing licenses and leases should not exist because there was no rules and regulations for commercial lease in the first place, so then that's the argument that's being made, that all existing leases and licenses should be invalidated. And that's the argument that's being made, that those who've invested monies to perform under the scope of those kinds of commercial leases or licenses that was given pursuant to that authority, whether they had the authority or not, those investments were made, those government commitments were made. And so this amendment is not just words, in my mind, Mr. Speaker. What this amendment does, it says, "If there's an existing commercial activity by virtue of a previous authorization," and that's the language that's going to say, "if any commercial leases or licenses were executed under a previous authorization, that this shall not be interpreted to be invalidated, and that the government, namely the Chomor Land Trust Commission, should run the course of that particular license. When that ends, if there's an option to renew, or whatever those terms are, when the terms have been satisfied 100%, that that property goes back into the Chomor Land Trust inventory, and the Chomor Land Trust commissioners at that time, that time in the future, will determine what is the best, highest, what's the highest and best use of that particular property." In response to our colleagues' concern that, well, what do we do to recognize the investments poured into this particular property and that individual wanting to have that kind of commercial activity? Well, when they negotiated the lease, I'm sure they factored in how many years it's going to take for them to recoup their investment. I'm sure their business plan would show all those things, whether it's first right of refusal, second right of refusals, or whatever options are attached to those leases. If we didn't do an amendment like this, Mr. Speaker, then we're not going to be providing any assurances to those kinds of, to that particular scenario where those investments were made and those commercial activities conceivably might not exist if someone's going to argue, like the previous speaker, that those leases or licenses should not have been executed in the first place, so they should just simply go away. And I, I think although we spend latter part, a good part of the afternoon discussing this of what we need to do here to protect those existing licenses and leases, so that we don't have this kind of chilling effect on the, on the, on the business climate, on the government's ability to make good on its word, some way, somehow, these individuals are holding leases and licenses. And they're told that with the adoption of the rules and regs, those leases and licenses, the original bill said that those leases and licenses shall be renegotiated. And so you could have a situation where the government will go back to these individuals and say, you know, "When you executed this lease many years ago, you're only paying so little. Now we want you to pay so much, so much that it's going to squeeze that person out of that kind of business, and their only recourse is to say, 'I can't afford to stay in this kind of lease or license, so I'm going to get out.'" So as much as we want to recognize that there's no way to invalidate a contract, an amendment like this will make it so that the Chomor Land Trust Commission will not interpret this act to mean that they can go and start invalidating these contracts or these license or leases that were given under a previous authorization. And so I, I think it's pretty significant what the mover's trying to do, and my involvement in this amendment is to just try to help him make it clear that it's not the intent to have these kinds of commercial activities at those particular areas in perpetuity, and that, that's not the intent. And so this revised amendment that we're offering would really make it clear that you just recognize that those leases and licenses exist by whatever authority, run the lease or license out, and then when it's done, you have to rebid it through the competitive process. And anyone who's, who's holding those current leases or licenses, no matter how much investment they put into that property, they're very well aware of the term of those leases or licenses, so they should not feel like we're doing anything to shortchange them. This does not change the terms of any, any existing lease or license before the Chomor Land Trust Commission.
Mr. Speaker, so just to clarify, and I know, thank you for allowing me back on, because I was looking for an answer. And if that's the answer, I guess the next question is, and maybe it's to the mover of the original amendment, is in terms of those leases that need to be protected, right? How many are they? And under what authority were they cast? Because I know of one lease that's out there, that we've talked about earlier, that was done by the, under the authority of law. It was passed, a law passed by a previous legislator, by a previous legislative body, right, which gave them the authority to be on that property, right? And it was before the Chomor Land Trust law was passed. And I just want to know, in terms of if we're talking about, are we talking about a significant number of people or groups or lessees? I mean, it seems to me, just to clarify, we're making a lot of stink about this, but then what are we really talking about? How many of these leases are out there that would probably be questioned because there were no rules in place? Or are all these leases prior to the Chomor Land Trust law being passed? Or was the, was the authority given to these lessees by a legislative action? Because if it is, if they had, if they were predating the Chomor Land Trust, and if they were, or, and/or if they were authorized by law, right, then this is a moot point. Are there any, and so the question then begs, are there any leases out there that were given out for commercial use during that, during that time since the Chomor Land Trust? I mean, and I guess a yes or no answer would do. Are there any out there?
Either the sponsor of the amendment or sponsor of the bill wish to yield?
Mr. Speaker, I think his question is better answered by the, by the sponsor of the bill, because the bill, the original language in the bill starts off, I think line 13 it is, "However, in the event that a designated available land has an existing commercial activity by virtue of a previous authorization." So I'm going based on what, on what the good senator's reading here as well. And if his question is, he wants to know under what authorization these leases or, or licenses we're talking about, then that's, I think, perhaps, if the, if the author of the bill would yield.
Either the author, co-sponsor wish to yield to that question of the number of commercial leases there are and what authority they exist? I don't see anyone yielding. Senator Espaldon?
Mr. Speaker, I, you know, again, I still don't understand. The way I was reading this, the original, before the amendment was made, right, I know there were certain situations. When, at the public hearing that I attended, right, with the last one on, on, on this bill, right, the director of Chomor Fair, Chomor Land Trust did say that there were a handful of leases, right? But he identified, I think, a couple, or he spoke to a couple of them that, again, were specifically authorized in law to have happened, or they existed before the Chomor Land Trust was even passed into law. So again, what are we talking about? Since, I mean, and I, and I would imagine that's what the original intent was by the author of this bill, to make sure that those that were probably, those leases that were probably created before the Chomor Land Trust bill came into effect, that there would be some kind of protection for those who have, who have had Chomor Land, you know, who have lands that would now have to revert back to the Chomor Land Trust. And that's why I was fine with the original language of it, you know, for the most part. Now, I think we've gotten away from at least that understanding that I had, and now we're going into a whole different realm, unless, of course, there are some properties and licenses and leases out there that were given out after the Chomor Land Trust Act was passed, and they were given out without the benefit of any rules. And I don't know that.
And yes, Mr. Speaker, there are. There are licenses and leases right now that are, are in existence without any rules and regs. And so all we're saying here is that we're going to protect them, because they were given to them in good faith, the, the, the lessees, licensees accepted it in good faith. And so all we're saying is we're protecting them now to ensure that, you know, the, the CLTC doesn't come in there and with the passage of these rules and regs and say, you know what, we have better use for this property, we want to be able to use it for something else, and so we're not going to honor whatever you have. So, yes.
Mr. Speaker, that can't be, because it was, if it was the CLTC who gave the lease out, even without rules in place, they can't go then and change the game, the rules of the game, or the, the, the terms of the contract, just because there's new rules in place. There's a contract in place. We can't change that contract.
So, so, Mr. Speaker, there's no pain in, 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 in offering this amendment? If we're saying they can't do that, there's a contracts clause in place, well, then fine, good. We're just reaffirming that, because the way it was, it was stated in the initial language is that the CLTC may, may be able to do that. So we just want to take that cloud away and take that, you know, that opportunity for anyone to take a look at this and say, well, yeah, we can do it. So what's the pain in moving this forward?
I'll take a short recess.
I'll take a short recess.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I tried not to say too much, but I really do think at this point it's imperative that I stand and speak about the original intent of the Chamorah Land Trust. The intent of the Chamorah Land Trust was to provide and assure that native inhabitants would have access to their Chamorah land at some point in the future. And if you go to 705-105 with the original law, it says, "Upon the enactment of this chapter, all available land shall immediately assume the status of Chamorah homelands and shall be under the control of the commission to be used and disposed of in accordance with the provisions of this chapter, except that." And in B, it says, "Any available land, as may not be immediately needed for this chapter, may be returned to the department for management. Any Chamorah homeland so returned may be disposed of under the general lease only. Each such lease, whether or not stipulated therein, shall be deemed made subject to the right and duty of the department to terminate the lease and return the lands to the commission whenever the commission gives notice that the lands are required for its purposes of this chapter." This chapter was for residential properties for Chamorahs. There is no right to commercial leases under this chapter. We can provide for commercial leases if they wanted to raise some money, but if and when the commission decides that it needs that property to be able to provide leases to Chamorahs for their residential use, the commission shall terminate -- each such lease, whether or not it's in the lease stipulated, shall be deemed to be made subject to the right and duty of the department to terminate the lease and return the lands to the commission whenever the commission gives notice that the lands are required for the purposes of this chapter. However, no lease shall be made for a term to exceed 25 years. All income arising from the leases entered and put into the Chamorah Home Loan Fund. So, as I have said from the first time we were discussing this, this is a very, very powerful commission. As I read in the original chapter, neither we as a legislature nor the governor as a governor has any authority to be able to touch those lands, and the decisions are made by the commission. And so, we may have spent five hours this afternoon trying to determine how we're going to deal with commercial leases, but the truth of the matter is, as soon as the commission decides that it wants that land back for the purposes of residential uses as per the original statute, it can terminate that lease. Because everybody understands that they're taking property pursuant to this lease. That's why I kept trying to explain to everybody, these are different lands. You're taking it under the -- recognizing that it may not be there forever for you to have your option every 25 years to have for the next 100 years as a lease for commercial purposes. These lands were supposed to be for homelands for residential use. Yes, they could be used temporarily for commercial uses, but if and when the commission determines it needs it and wants it for residential purposes, it can terminate that lease because it's supposed to be understood, even if it's not in the lease. I just raised that. I'm not going to add any amendment. I'm just saying, we should recognize what the original statute reads and understand what we're doing today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Okay, so my understanding now is from the clerks is that M.C.T. didn't move with her amendment. Senator Rodriguez had proffered a first amendment, and then a second was to amend that amendment, which we have before us, with this act shall not be interpreted. So, that's what we have in discussions. Of course, continued with Senator Espaldan and Senator Rispicio, and that's, at least to my knowledge, the last discussion that has taken place. And I need to hear from either one of you whether there is a resolution in some of the concerns. And then, hearing and seeing Senator Rispicio not his head, but Senator Espaldan who raised the concern earlier.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. And I thank the speaker for allowing for the recess because it did give us an opportunity to talk about the issues. And I believe that one of the issues that I had concern with will be addressed as will be forthcoming. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So, on this amendment, which is then moved by Senator Rodriguez, an amendment to an amendment, and is there anybody else who would like to participate in that discussion of the amendment to the amendment? And if not, then I would ask the author then to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. And I certainly also want to register my appreciation for giving us an opportunity to talk through this amendment and to just continue to make it better, Madam Speaker, so that the intent offered by the original sponsor of this amendment is really consistent and clear that what we're trying to do is to honor these existing commercial leases that was given by any authority. And given what the previous speaker shared with us, and certainly he has a lot of history with the Chamorah Land Trust Commission, he was the chief justice that presided over the opinion that required and mandated that this government implement the provisions of the Chamorah Land Trust Act. I think that this amendment is still consistent because what we're trying to do is prevent the Chamorah Land Trust Commission from voiding an existing commercial lease to issue that commercial lease to another -- for another commercial lease. And so, Senator Espaldan's also corrected the concerns that he raised with respect to recognizing any other provisions of the contract and wanting those provisions to be honored will be moved by the main mover of this amendment. And so, I call for the vote on this amendment as amended, recognizing that Senator Rodriguez will do an amendment to recognize that if there are any options to renew in that particular lease or license should also be recognized as the term of the lease or license. So, I call for the question.
Thank you. Senator Rodriguez, on the amendment to the amendment now to close? Oh, but you're going to do -- okay, because I thought you said he was going to -- okay. All right, I understand now. Okay, so on the -- well, it says DGR, and I know Senator Rispicio had closed, on it, on the amendment to the amendment. Senator, did you want to speak on it? No? Okay, so on the amendment to the amendment that Senator Rispicio had proffered, are there any objections? No objections? It's ordered. So, Senator Rodriguez to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you too to our colleagues for the discussions on this amendment, which was really not to go over it again, but really was just to protect the existing lease and licensees who have -- who are using these properties at this point now, and just to reaffirm the, you know, our good faith in dealing, you know, when dealing with these lands and these leases and these licenses. And so, just to even go further, Madam Speaker, to affirm this protection, I wanted to include, and this is the last amendment, is that the last sentence of this amendment of Senator -- of what amendment we have before us now is, and I'll read it, "At expiration of a lease or license," and this is the language I like to add, "the following, and all options to renew that lease or license." And to go on, "The CLTC shall reconsider its designation as available land and comply with all other provisions of this act." So, it just makes it perfectly clear, Mr. Speaker, that the expiration of any lease or license ends at the end of the initial, plus if there's any option to renew, it ends at the end of that option to renew. So, that's what this amendment does. And I'm asking my colleagues to please support it, and I know it also addresses a concern by Senator Espaldan. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On this Rodriguez amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Senator Espaldan, does this satisfy your concerns? Senator Espaldon, does this satisfy your concerns?
Yes, because the concern was really, the way the language read without this amendment that's being proffered right now is that it would basically not allow for any options for renewal. And I know that in this present bill, that there is language that says, a minimum of 25 years with the option to renew for another 21 years. Under the language that exists before this amendment was made, basically at the end of 25 years, then the CLTC shall reconsider its designation as available property. And so, this would just basically then say, basically to perhaps honor any options that may be exercised. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard on the Rodriguez amendment? On the Rodriguez amendment, is there an objection? Anything further, Senator Rodriguez? Madam Speaker, I understand you have some amendments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I do have an amendment, and it's passed out, at least the first one, is on page four, line 12. And in the, and this was something earlier that, you know, I had, I had, was reading from the certain lands that are being designated, and then they're being heard and all of that, and then it was supposed to come to the legislature. And on page four, then, if you look at page four, subsection C, where it says, "The lots identified in A above may be leased or licensed by CLTC to the general public pursuant to 75-105D of chapter 75, 21 Guam Code annotated, for commercial use and for a term not to exceed 25 years," and so on until, of course, unless otherwise approved by the legislature for longer term. What I want one to put is the language that I've taken out of the original law, and it is pursuant to exactly section 75-105, which is subsection B, and as a matter of fact, it is the exact language that you read, where then it pursuant to 75-105, that each such lease, whether or not stipulated herein, shall be deemed made subject to the right and duty of the CLTC to terminate the lease and to return the lands to the commission whenever the commission gives notice that the lands are required by it for the purposes of chapter 75 of title 21. And the reason for this, Mr. Speaker, is that we currently have, you know, the rules for residential and agricultural, and we're, it's very strict about how then and who, you know, should then be eligible to be able to lease. And now, we're going to say that, on the other hand, when it comes to these commercial properties, that they have an exception, or there is an exception to the rule. And because that language is there already in 75-105 for agricultural and residential, I feel that by the same token, that's saying that there should be equity as well in commercial leases, and that's the reason for wanting then to actually put that language in this section that, which is those lands or identification of those certain properties then that could be used for commercial leases. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, there is that equity, that if we're going to require that for residential and also for agricultural, that the same be applicable for commercial leases. So, that's the amendment that I proffer to our colleagues here. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senator Tom Ada, after Senator Ada, any other senator wish to be heard on the Juan Pad amendment? It's Mark JWP on the top.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I just want to, you know, the language that the mover of this amendment I was referring to is on, has to do with section 75-105, and the title of that is, "Control by Commission of Available Lands," and then a semicolon, "Return to the Department." And it says there, "Upon and after the enactment of this chapter, all available lands shall immediately assume the status of Chumaro homelands and shall be under the control of the commission to be used and disposed of in accordance with the provisions of this chapter, except that." And in 75-105B, as in boy, it says, "Any available land as may not immediately, as may not be immediately needed for the purposes of this chapter may be returned to the department, to the Department of Land Management for management." But I think, I read this, yeah, it reads right here, "May be returned to the department for management." And the definition of department, as it is used in this law, is that the department refers to the Department of Land Management. And it is to be used then for whatever public purpose I presume that land management deems appropriate for those lands. And yes, it does say that it can go ahead and continue to use this, but when we need it, the Chumaro, the commission can then say, "Okay, I want the land back. Whatever you're doing with it, terminate it. It comes back to us for whatever purpose that we need to use it for." Now, I think the difference here is that with these commercial leasing, we're going to identify, so take for example, Oka Point. So, they're going to go in and they're going to, they're going to enter into a lease. Now, I imagine if somebody was to lease that, they're probably going to want to build a $200 million structure, or maybe even more. And in order for that investor to be able to recoup their investment, their two, three, 400, what, Dusitani, I think, went, was like a $400 million investment, to enter into a lease agreement, you know, for 50 years or whatever it's going to take to recoup the investment, and then to read a language in there that says, "However, if at any time the commission wants this land back," that's it. The lease is done with, you're out. Boy, that's like, you know, certainly putting a real chill on that agreement. Who's going to agree to that? And so, the very thing that we're trying to do to lease these commercial properties out to be able to generate revenues, we're certainly putting the, you know, the stop on that right here with that sort of language. You know, it's kind of like, yeah, you can have it for 50, 75 years, but if we want it back sooner than that, that's it. It's over. What happens to the investor and the hundreds of millions of dollars that they put in? Might as well go and find a, you know, a surer gamble than to do that. So, I certainly would, you know, I think the context that that phrase was in, in section 75-105B, was in the context of Department of Land Management, you can take this land, use it for whatever public purpose, but, you know, it comes back. No, we're talking about something different. We're talking about now people wanting to come in and invest. So, I, well, I'll listen to what others have to say, but I just want to say that I really have serious concerns with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard? On the Juan Pad, Senator Snickless.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yeah, just to be clear, if we are going to want to pursue commercial leases, this would be a poison pill to any prospective commercial lease. If we're looking at having people invest in a structure for tens of millions of dollars, the risk of that having to be reverted back to the commission, I mean, that would be a risk that would not be worth taking to any investor. One of the reasons why I proffered the earlier amendment, for us to limit the amount of properties available for commercial leasing, is that we can still protect the remaining 90% of the trust specific to residential properties while allowing for about 10% thereabouts to be used for commercial purposes in order to monetize those 10% worth of properties to be able to survey the land, be able to get the infrastructure onto those properties. But we can limit it to 10%. This particular language would make it effectively 0%. No one would want to pump tens of millions of dollars into any commercial lease that could be revoked at any time by the commission. I understand that the language is a real catch-all. It provides ultimate power. It retains ultimate power in the commission with respect to all these commercial leases. But if the intent of all of this effort is really for us to be able to provide the necessary cash resources to get properties surveyed and to get the infrastructure on those properties because we have 8,000 people waiting for 25 years, then we really actually need to make that possible with all respect. This language would effectively kill any prospective commercial lease that may be considered with regards to any of these rules and regulations that we're talking about here today. So, if we do pass this amendment, just to be very clear, is that I, in my conscience, I know I stated it on the record, it would be a poison pill for commercial leases pursuant to this entire act. If that's really ultimately what we want to do, then we can pass the amendment. But if instead ultimately what we want to do is allow at least a limited amount of properties to be able to be leased commercially in order to provide the cash resources to survey, to provide infrastructure, to clear that 8,000-person backlog that's 25 years old, then we really cannot pass this amendment. And that's really what I just wanted to make it very, very clear as we voted on this, Mr. Speaker.
The problem that we have, colleagues, is the law is the law as it currently stands. With or without the Speaker's amendment, those are there. Until somebody wants to make the amendment to repeal 71-105B and D, they are there.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker?
If I may make an inquiry to legal counsel, because in section A on page three, line 20, it says, "Notwithstanding subsection 75-107F of chapter 75 of 21 Guam Code annotated." So, because we have that notwithstanding language in there, how does that notwithstanding language translate into all of the other subprovisions thereafter?
I'll have legal counsel come down. I'll have legal counsel come down.
(inaudible)
The problem that we have, colleagues, is the law is the law as it currently stands. With or without the speaker's amendment, those are there. Until somebody wants to make the amendment to repeal 71-105-B and D, they are there.
If I may make an inquiry to legal counsel, because in Section A on page three, line 20, it says notwithstanding subsection 75-107-F of chapter 75 of 21 Guam Code annotated. So because we have that notwithstanding language in there, how does that notwithstanding language translate into all of the other subprovisions thereafter?
I'll have legal counsel come down. Any other senator wishes to be heard on the WAMPAN amendment? If not, Madam Speaker, you're welcome to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, I can appreciate, you know, the two previous speakers' concern. One in particular would be that, you know, one said it would kill the bill, the other said it's a poison pill, you know, for commercial leasing. I just feel that if we're going to be strict with agricultural leases, be strict with residential leases, and then go beyond what was required in the original intent of what they consider commercial leases in a community or subdivision, that, you know, we can't provide the same language of what's in 75-105. B and D, of course, D says that you can, in the management of any retained available lines not required by 75-107, of course, you've got to make sure that you do B. So I just feel that the commission are not unreasonable people that they're going to just go and say that in spite of that particular section, they're going to just go to the individual and say, "We're going to terminate, you know, the lease." I just don't really believe that because if they had the authority to do that already, one most spoken about lease was, you know, the Gulf Coast where there are clearly, you know, some violations, at least in terms of back payments, I mean, past due payments and all that, some reports maybe that have not been done, environmental reports in terms of how they're taking care of the grounds and whether that could potentially affect, you know, the waterlands, I mean, things of that nature, but yet it wasn't done. I just, I don't believe it. Maybe one day, who knows who the next group of commissioners would be in 2018, that maybe you might get commissioners who, you know, would say, "Okay, I'm going to do it," or Either way, I just feel that we need to, I want to protect the original intent of the law, the same language that is currently in 75-105, that I think it should be applicable to all leases and not that you have a special language for just a commercial lease. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to present this amendment.
On the WAMPAN amendment, is there any objections to the WAMPAN amendment? There's been an objection registered, and so all those in favor of the WAMPAN amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Yes, there's another amendment, but I think you spoke on it. No, I understand, but you, never mind. You have another amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My last amendment is on page 11, line 13, and I know that this was a request by the commission and the senator had, the author of the bill had decided then to go ahead and then provide that section that, in which there is to permit the subleasing or assignment of any properties. And I just feel that what this, this whole section is contrary and is actually changing the original law. And I've just finished reading a committee report that was at the time was by former and defuncto Angel Santos, in which many amendments were being, that were being proffered to come up with the rules and regs. And one of the biggest arguments that came up is that any of those kind of discussions that were taking place about it, even by attorneys opposed to the reasons that their proposed rules and regs, you know, do not follow them, the spirit and the letter of the law, and this particular section definitely does not. And therefore, it would change exactly what the original law would be by actually adding this particular section. So I, my amendment is to delete that section.
On the WAMPAN amendment to delete, on page 11, section 5, Senator Blas, any other senator? Senator Blas?
Mr. Speaker, just a basic point of inquiry. Is in the ITC building and all that property in that area belong to the Chamorlan Trust? And I pose that question because that goes to, you know, the amendment that's being What then happens to that activity that was permitted on that property in as far as I've noticed rooms of space. And so I bring that as a point of, I guess, a point of inquiry, a point of concern, again. While there was the intent, I have to remind everybody of that building that sits at 114 and all the structures that are in that area. Does this now say that when one person moves out of, if, you know, of one of the spaces that's currently being occupied, that can no longer be occupied after that? I have to bring that as a...
Are you asking that the mover, the amendment...
I maybe I should ask the author of the amendment to use that question.
Mr. Speaker, I don't know whether the ITC is, the building is sitting on Chamorlan Trust lands. I don't know that, so I can't answer that question.
Okay, well, I think that based on the knowledge that I have with regard, it is sitting on Chamorlan Trust property. And it was sitting there, and it was permitted because the very nature of what it's called, okay? The ITC, International Trade Center, it was, because individuals at that time thought that this was a great place to be able to spur economic growth, that was permitted. But I'm getting, what I'm getting at now is because I know it's there and because I know that it's being sublet, what then happens to, and I concern what this provision or the striking of this provision, what it will do for future subleasing?
I understand the speaker, the mover of the amendment was not able to address it. If memory serves me right, and she and I are probably one of three or four that were live at the time that the building was built, was before the Chamorlan Trust was passed. The ITC went up before...
By who's, yeah, by the inventory of it?
It's GIDA's, it's GIDA's economic, it's part of the CAVO's, CAVO development or economic zone. But it's, that is not Chamorlan, that was, at least my understanding, was GIDA's not Chamorlan Trust.
All right. Well, if that be the case, then I stand corrected. I just, through the research and everything that, and what I've been told, is, yeah, it's GIDA manages it, but who owns it? I think by statute, GIDA can own property.
So Senator Adda, do you wish to respond to that?
I'm responding. I have a question.
Where they're putting the parking lot?
The reason the law allows for subleasing, it doesn't allow for assignments.
I think that there are two different issues being discussed. One is ITC, and you're talking assignment and subleasing.
They say an ITC would expect...
You're recognized at this point. And then Senator Sniklas.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have concerns about deleting the option for assignment of commercial leases. And the concern that I have is that, is that, you know, it's very possible, in fact, as I understand it, with entrepreneurs, you know, they're good at going in, starting up a business, and then after that, they let it go because they want to go and start up something new, and that's just pretty much characteristic of an entrepreneur. And so then, in cases like that, I think then the assignment of leases to sustain the growth of that end, of that going, of that commercial activity certainly would make a lot of sense. And, and so the language that we have there is that, of course, you know, we want to give that, that business activity a chance to kind of grow and flourish, so that's why there is some degree of restriction into the assignment, and that an assignment would not be allowed until at least five years. I mean, if it's going to crash and burn, it's going to crash and burn on the second, maybe third year, maybe even up to the fifth year. But after that, if it has survived that long, the chances are is that it will be a going concern. So because of that, we have put in the five-year time limitation. On top of that, you know, since we're, Chamorlan, the commission is going to go through all this effort to get this property leased out so that it can generate revenues for the commission, and if in fact we're not going to allow an assignment, you know, if we've already committed to lease it out, does it matter if we leased it out to, you know, businessman number one and that now businessman number two is willing to take it over under the same duties and obligations of the original lease? Does that really matter to the commission? What matters to the commission is that they have a lease in place that they're satisfied with and is going to provide them income to be able The ITC, International Trade Center, it was because individuals at that time thought that this was a great place to be able to spur economic growth, that was permitted. But I'm getting, what I'm getting at now is because I know it's there and because I know that it's being sublet, what then happens to, and I'm concerned at what this provision or the striking out this provision, what it will do for future sub...
I understand the Speaker, the move of the amendment was not able to address it. If memory serves me right, and she and I are probably one of three or four that were live at the time that the building was built, was before the Chamor Land Trust was passed. The ITC went up before...
By whose, yeah, by the inventory of it?
It's GIDA's, it's GIDA's economic, it's part of the CAVO's, CAVO development or economic zone. But that is not Chamor, that was, at least my understanding, was GIDA's not Chamor Land Trust.
All right. Well, if that be the case, then I stand corrected. I just, through the research and everything, and what I've been told, is, yeah, GIDA manages it, but who owns it? I think by statute, GIDA can own property.
Senator added, do you wish to respond to that? Where they're putting the parking lot. One is ITC and your talking assignment and subleasing. And then Senator Snicholas.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have concerns about deleting the option for assignment of commercial leases. And the concern that I have is that, is that, you know, it's very possible, in fact, as I understand it, with entrepreneurs, you know, they're good at going in, starting up a business, and then after that, they let it go because they want to go and start up something new, and that's just pretty much characteristic of an entrepreneur. And so then, in cases like that, I think then the assignment of leases to sustain the growth of that end, of that going, of that commercial activity certainly would make a lot of sense. And so the language that we have there is that, of course, you know, we want to give that business activity a chance to kind of grow and flourish, so that's why there is some degree of restriction into the assignment, and that an assignment would not be allowed until at least five years. I mean, if it's going to crash and burn, it's going to crash and burn on the second, maybe third year, maybe even up to the fifth year. But after that, if it has survived that long, the chances are is that it will be a going concern. So because of that, we have put in the five-year time limitation. On top of that, you know, since we're, Chamor, the Commission is going to go through all this effort to get this property leased out so that it can generate revenues for the Commission. And if, in fact, we're not going to allow an assignment, you know, if we've already committed to lease it out, does it matter if we leased it out to, you know, businessman number one and that now businessman number two is willing to take it over under the same duties and obligations of the original lease? Does that really matter to the Commission? What matters to the Commission is that they have a lease in place that they're satisfied with, and it's going to provide them income to be able to do the things that they need to get done. And so from that standpoint, I would want to preserve the language for allowing for the assignment of commercial leases. I would have to take a look in the statute, but I believe the statute currently allows for subleasing. And with that, if I, you know, if I could come back or if legal counsel can find it, but I know that I read something in the statute regarding subleasing. So I certainly would want to preserve the provision for the assignment of commercial leases. Thank you.
Senator Snicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, when we rejected the original rules and regulations and we overrode the Governor's veto to reinforce that rejection, it was because, well, at least on my part, when I voted for that, it was because I did not want unlimited commercial leases to take away land for the benefit of the Chamor people and have it used only for commercial purposes. That was just going way too far one way. But, Mr. Speaker, if we don't do something to fix the current system, then the Chamor Land Trust is only going to serve as a graveyard for the Chamor people because it's taking so long for us to be able to get these properties surveyed, to get the infrastructure onto these properties, that people are dying before they're able to get their land. You know, I've gotten letters and calls from people who are on this list for 25 years, and when you reach out to them and their children reach back to you and they say they died waiting for the land, something has to be done differently, Mr. Speaker. So while it's too much to ask for us to give out unlimited commercial leases, I also think it's just wrong for us also to seek to always try to preserve the existing statute that is not adequately serving the objective for our people. And the objective is to get the lands and the Chamor Land Trust into the hands of the Chamor people for their benefit. And for us to do that, especially with the limited number of lands that we have and the number of applicants, we need to get those lands surveyed, we need to get infrastructure on those lands. And that's not going to happen, Mr. Speaker, on its own. And while we can lament about what probably should have been done in the past or about what management should have done with the land trust, the reality is that it falls on us today to come up with a solution. And so for me, I'm trying to find this middle ground here, Mr. Speaker, where, yeah, we're not giving the whole, you know, we're not throwing the doors wide open for anybody to go ahead and lease unlimited amounts of commercial property. That's not right, and I'm glad we stopped that. But for us to be trying to take out these sections here that are going to make it easier for us to lease these properties is also going to push us right back to where we started, to the point where we're not going to be able to get these lands out, Mr. Speaker. You know, when I looked at this and I saw that we have a 25-year-old list, 25 years old, I'm only nine years older than the first applicant for this property. 25-year-old list with 8,000 names on that list, and we need the money to be able to go out and survey these properties and get the infrastructure on them, to get those properties into the hands of those people. Now, this amendment, Mr. Speaker, will take out a section in this bill that would allow somebody who goes out there and gets a commercial lease and builds a huge structure and wants to sublease those rooms or those spaces, let's say they build a shopping center or whatever, this particular section allows them to sublease those spaces within that structure to be able to generate the revenue they need to be a viable commercial operation. Now, we've already put into the bill limitations so that no more than 10% of the total land trust property can be used for this purpose. We've taken the necessary steps to protect against unlimited commercialization of something that's supposed to be for residential benefit. Now, only as much as 10% of it is going to be for that purpose. The remaining 90% is for the residents. Now, for that 10% to be able to actually have a payoff to benefit the other 90%, we need to be able to open it up for the way that we're actually intending to. Otherwise, really, are we just going to pass something to say we almost went there, but we didn't quite? And are we going to go down the road years from now and look back and people are going to be saying, "Hey, you know, what was that all about? I still haven't gotten my land?" I'm really not, I'm really not up for that, Mr. Speaker. You know, when I see a 25-year-old problem, and I know that people have been dying waiting for something that our founders, defuncto Angel Santos and Speaker Ben, have tried to set into motion for their entire careers. How are we going to get the lands to our people? We need the money to survey it and to put the infrastructure into it. Where are we going to get that money? Where are we going to get that money? We spend money all over the place. I worry about how we even pay tax refunds and vendors. Those are obligations. This land trust is an obligation. What we're trying to do in this whole process is to allow the land trust to monetize itself, allow 10% of those properties to be used for commercial purposes so that we can pay for those surveys and pay for the infrastructure and finally realize the dream that was started 25 years ago. It would be wrong for us to have unlimited commercialization of those properties the way the Governor was insisting with his original rules and regulations. That was wrong. But it's equally wrong for us, Mr. Speaker, to stick our heel in the mud and not do what we need to do to get those properties surveyed and the infrastructure onto those properties. I really have a difficult time reconciling that, Mr. Speaker. I don't think it's a good thing for us to say that we've waited 25 years and we still haven't resolved the issue. And it definitely isn't going to sit well with me to have gone through all of this and to have come so close and yet to still come up short. I was chatting with one of my colleagues, and I very much agree with what she shared with me. Our people, especially the people who are going to be looking to benefit from this, they don't really want to get all tangled up in the details. They just want the problem to get solved. And if you're one of those 8,000 people, or if you're the son or a daughter of one of those 8,000 people who've died, if your name has been on that thing for 10, 15, 20, 25 years, you just want this thing to get resolved. Now, we had a letter here submitted by the Chamor Nation saying, "Yeah, just provide the money." They're right. We just need to provide the funds. And absent anybody jumping up to do an appropriation, to take from one place or another to pay for this, we need to be bold enough to come up with the solutions. And monetizing those assets within the Chamor Land Trust, limiting it to 10% is a solution if we open it up and actually allow it to be one. Now, putting these provisions in here that are going to undermine that, whether in whole or in part, is just going to set it all back. And where are we going to be? Where are those 8,000 people going to be? Where is the Chamor Land Trust going to be? It's not supposed to be turned to, you know, the next big commercial development, any more than it's meant to serve as a Chamor graveyard. And it's, I feel like I'm just sometimes stuck in between those two extremes here. And we don't need to be stuck in those two extremes, Mr. Speaker. It's just a matter of us being willing to understand that things need to happen, and they need to happen in a way that's within the spirit of what was intended originally, but facing the reality of the monetization that needs to take place in order for it to finally be accomplished. That's all we need to do. We can hash out the details. Is it limiting it to 10%? Is it limiting it to 9%? 488 acres? 520 acres? Existing leases versus new leases? We can get into all those details, but in the end, Mr. Speaker, just as we're not supposed to turn it into the next huge commercial development, we're not supposed to allow it to just sit there and not benefit the people that it was intended. So this amendment is, you know, just like the previous one, it's, I think it's just pushing us too far onto the other side of the equation. And we're coming to the understanding that that subsection 75-105B allows the Chamor Land Trust to be able to renege on all these leases at any particular time and how that really is a poison pill for any commercialization period. I mean, really? Are we really going to be solving the problem of all of this? The bottom line is we really have to. So I object to this amendment, and I really, we really are going to have to look at considering another amendment as well to not withstand subsection 75-105B also with respect to this particular act so that we can open it up, if that's really what we're trying to do. And if it's not, then we really need to be honest about this whole dialogue and go back and say, "You know what? If we don't do these things, those other things really might not happen, and we really do need to come up with the appropriations." We cannot not go all the way if we're going to make this be inept in any way. We can't, we can't just leave it hanging either. Our people have waited too long. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The time's now 5:30. I believe legal counsel and the main sponsor are meeting on something. Why don't we recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00, and hopefully they would have resolved that.